If you, I would like to call this meeting to order first. Secondly, if you can stand with us and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, we greatly appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
President.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderwoman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Okay. Pastor King, lead us in prayer, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do give you thanks for the rising of today's sun and for the setting, for this occasion that we gather this evening, and for the leaders in whom we are surrounded by. We ask your presence would lead us, that the things that we speak of that relate to our city, Father, would somehow allow it to go well with everybody in our community. So, Lord, again, we pray your presence in this place. We give you thanks in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have general proceedings.
General proceedings, approval of the minutes for approvals of Reverend City Council Meeting Minutes, October 11, 2021.
Second. It's been probably motion second. Any questions, corrections? Hearing no questions, hearing no corrections. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next on agenda tonight, we have communication reports and reports by the mayor. Just got a couple items on the agenda here. First, I would like to let the public know that on Friday, we were able to take a truckload of water over to Dixmoor, and they were very appreciative for our kindness, and they wanted me to let the council know how much they really appreciate us donating water. I know some of the other local municipalities have been doing the same, and so hopefully, I haven't heard anything today, but hopefully they have water running. I'm not sure they do. Good, good. So, that should take care of that issue.
No pressure.
No pressure, okay. All right, so I just want to get that out there. I thought that was a good gesture from my staff and also the city to be able to do that. Secondly, I have on the agenda here, we have approval from the Water Supply Strategy, Burns and McDonald Agreement. I think that was presented to the committee. Is that correct?
Yes, it was discussed in admin meeting.
Admin meeting also. I need a motion, please.
Motion for approval for the Water Supply Strategy for Burns and McDonald Agreement.
Second. Okay, it's been probably motion second. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Second item I have tonight is the Country Club Hills Small Business Grant. I know we've had several discussions on this one at our admin meeting. Also, you should have an updated copy of the agreement that was altered by the Alderman at our last admin meeting. Hopefully, you have that in front of you and that we can go ahead and move forward with that tonight.
Motion for approval for Country Club Hills Small Grant.
Second. Okay, it's been probably motion in second. Any questions? Hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, I have the swearing in of a fire and police commission. I have two individual candidates that we want to present to the council that has volunteered to work with the commission members, and I have on the list here, I have Edward Gillespie and Mike Perry.
Motion for approval for swearing in of the fire police commissioners.
Okay, these are volunteers, and they volunteered to help us on this commission. Second. It's been probably motion in second. Are there any questions?
I just want to mention, Mayor, that the two of these gentlemen have served the city of Country Club Hills for well over 20, 30 years, so I think they'll be a good fit for the commission.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, I need a motion?
Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Oh, we got a motion already? Oh, okay. I'm a little late here. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have another special volunteer that I would like to present to the council tonight, a member that wants to be an individual gentleman, Reverend James King, who wants to be a part of the Pastoral Commission. And Pastor King is the pastor of a local church in town here.
United Christian.
United Christian Church, and he wants to be a part of the Pastoral Commission, which I think is great, since he lives and works in the city of Country Club Hills.
Did we get his $2,000 entry fee?
We're going to collect that tomorrow.
Later, okay. Motion. Oh, United Christian Church for the Pastoral Commission.
Second. All right, it's been probably.
A second came from Alderman Spivey. Thank you.
It's been probably motion in second. If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Now, if I can start with the commissions. Yes, I'm going to, if I can start with the commission, if you can come up up front and take the oath, that will be administered by a clerk. Sure. Starting with Eddie Gillespie, and then after that, it will be Mike Perry, in that order, and then after that, it'll be Reverend King. All three can come on down, and we'll just go from there. Okay. Anybody want to jump?
We can go.
I, please, please, please.
Okay, with Gillespie, please.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
I will.
I will.
At all times.
At all times.
Maintain and conduct.
Maintain and conduct.
Myself in a manner.
Myself in a manner.
Fit in as a commissioner.
Fit in as a commissioner.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
I further agree.
I further agree.
To abide by.
To abide by.
All the rules.
All the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as.
My duties as.
Fire and police commissioner.
By and police commissioner.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
Of the city of Country Club Hills.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
United.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Can you go get a quick picture with the fire police commissioners?
It's her.
It's her.
And Sue?
Go later, we.
I got that.
One, two, three. Push it away. Two. Two.
I state my name. Do solemnly swear. That I will uphold. Protect and defend. The Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of Illinois. I will. At all times. Maintain and conduct. Myself. In a manner. Fit in as a commissioner. Of the city of Country Club Hills. I further agree. To abide. By all of the rules. Regulations. And ordinances. Of the city of Country Club Hills. I will faithfully discharge. My duties. As pastoral commissioner. Of the city. Of Country Club Hills. To the best of my ability. United.
Once again, congratulations to our three volunteers. We have other commissions that's open, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we're always looking for volunteers. Don't hesitate to volunteer to work in your community, so we definitely appreciate you. Okay, moving on with the agenda, at this time, we want to call for the clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to say thank you to our Pastoral Commission. They always come out. Sometimes I may contact them at the last moment, Pastor Tiller, and they still make it out, First Lady Tiller, but we just want to let you know how much we appreciate you all coming out to give a blessing to this council. Also, for Pastor King, United Christian Church, there's information on the information table where they are issuing booster shots. Is that correct, Pastor King?
Everything's shots now.
Okay.
So, you can able to receive your first vaccination. All three of the COVID-19 vaccines are available, so booster shots for those persons who fit the criteria of being 65 or older, individuals who are between the ages of 18 and older who may have some type of extenuating medical condition are able to qualify for those booster shots.
Thank you. And again, the information is on the information table to my right. Okay, October is Fire Prevention Month. As Fire Prevention Month comes to a close, this is a reminder, the city of Country Club Hills does require certain placements of smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and fire extinguishers per building department ordinance. Please remember to change the batteries or replace the equipment according to the recommendations. It's time to fall back. Daylight savings time ends Sunday, November 7, and it's a great time to go ahead and change those batteries, just make it a pattern of changing that time of year. The city is also kicking off a campaign to promote the Code Red, Reverse 911, and Constant Contact, which is an email database information system. The forums are also at the information table. The quickest way to do this is to go online, go to the city website, and you can just enter your information. It will contact, you will be contacted for emergencies, potential health hazards that may occur, or for general notification. And again, the fastest way is just to go to the city website and you look for Code Red. Upcoming events. Last Friday, October 22, was Think Pink Day. Thank you to the council for participating tonight by wearing your masks with the butterflies and the pink suit, and we thank you for the audience for participating as well. There is a huge increase in breast cancer for women in the African-American community, so we want to make sure that everyone is aware of it, that you're getting your mammograms, and that we donate when we have an opportunity towards breast cancer research. October 30, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, EDC Shred Day. Alderman Spivey will expound on that. Also, on October 30, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., the Halloween event will be held here at the theater in the semicircle on the other side. Halloween is October 31. Trick or treat hours are 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and we encourage parents to please join your children. Please do not let them go out alone. Join them and make sure that they are socially distancing and masks if necessary. Okay, one second. Prop time. The sleigh is coming. Our beautiful sleigh will be in place in the lobby of City Hall November 15. The city will begin accepting donations of non-perishable food items, no expired dates, please, and the city will also accept new hats and gloves for children. We would like to accept them in not only children's sizes, but adult sizes too, because some children are a little older, and so they need to have the larger sizes of hats and gloves. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. I think also Halloween celebration will be on Saturday, correct, which is the 30th?
31st is Sunday.
I know, but we're doing a trunk or treat.
Yes.
On Saturday, and then we're doing one on Sunday as well, right?
2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Okay, so in addition to the Saturday trunk or treat, there'll be additional one on Sunday.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, at this time, we call for the collector's report.
The collector's report is in your package. If you have any questions, please contact the treasurer.
Okay, treasurer report also is in the package.
Sir, the treasurer's report is in your package.
All right. Yes.
On the treasurer's report, I would like to look at page 29, and please explain to me the amount of money that we have in the theater.
You have to ask the, well, I had the clerk to, the treasurer to contact you on that. I can't answer that for you.
I mean, it's a black and white. I'm just trying to make sure it's right, that's all.
I don't know. I didn't do the report, so I'll have the treasurer to contact you to answer that question.
Please do.
All right, thanks. Okay. Next, we want to go to the committee reports, and the first committee we have on the docket tonight will be Finance, Insurance, Risk Management. Alderman Lockett is the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for $589,516.72.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in second. If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
That'll be in my report.
Thank you. Next report, we have Law and Ordinance, Government Operation. Alderwoman Evans is the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to update my next meeting. I'm going to move it, I think I had it scheduled for this week, but I'm actually going to schedule it for November 4 at 5:00 p.m. That's when my next Law and Ordinance meeting will be, November 4 at 5:00 p.m., and I have no items on my report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Sorry, correction, 5:30. His is 5:00, sorry.
Oh.
Mine is 5:30.
5:30.
November 4 at 5:30.
Okay. Okay, next, we have Public Works and Utilities. Alderman Davis is the chairman.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to seek, I need a resolution.
Resolution ours and Robert, 0-16.
Okay, I'd like to seek council approval for 2021, 2022 Resolution for I.DOT MFT Maintenance, and this is really just a housekeeping. This is how we spend our MFT funds, and we've just lumped in all the projects that we're going to be using this amount of money, sidewalk repair, tree removal, street light, ditch mowing, COVID repair, drainage, structure repair, traffic signals, snow and ice, and street maintenance repair, and the amount is $420,750.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, the second item, like to seek council approval for 2021 Crown Castle Lease Agreement Amendment, and this is, they want to add, this is dish wireless, they want to add one of their signals to our tower, and they're going to pay us $500 a month, and it'll stay fixed until 2028, and it'll start increasing at their rate of 2.8% per year. And it's a $3,000 signing bonus.
Okay.
Second.
It's been probably motion in second. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, and the other item, it's just for public information, we were awarded a 2021 Invest in Cook Award, and the city has been awarded funding for a .8 mile sidewalk along the east side of Pulaski Road, installation of the sidewalk from the street to 169th, and it'll create a pedestrian route over I-80, and this will help overcome significant barrier to pedestrian traffic. And the route's going to join the houses, and it's going to go from Hillcrest High School, and it'll go to the commercial retail north of I-80. This project was highlighted in the city's Phase 1 study for the widening of the Pulaski Road project, and they're supposed to start construction in the summer of 2022. And another item, just the Pulaski Road intersection improvement, which has been going on for some time, but it's winding down, and the new street lights have been installed, and they're working. All the temporary traffic signals have been removed, and the contractor's now removing all temporary light poles and minor landscaping, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Economic Development Planning and Zoning. Alderman Spivey, the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, residents. I would like to announce that on Saturday, October 30, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., we'll be having our shred day in the theater of Country Club Hills Parking Lot, 4150 West 183rd Street. You could bring boxes, paper, well, please don't bring paper clips or binders or anything like that, but bring all your papers that needs to be shredded. We'll be kicking off at 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That will be this Saturday, October 30, at 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Also, I'd like to announce that we have a new caterer in town, Ballinary Culery, 4245 West 167th Street. Last week, we had a grand opening there. The mayor was on hand. Economic and Development Commission, Tom and Jenny, was there, had a great time, and it was going to, it was a very nice time for the residents here in Country Club Hills. Great turnout. End of my report.
We have, we have an agreement with Bic lots. I don't know if you want to talk about that.
With the Bic lots? Okay. Well, as was stated before, a couple of months ago, that we have a new item that's coming here to Cooper Grove, it's the Bic lots. They will be coming in, I'm not exactly sure what date, I know they signed the contract, and they still going through some things, but they will be here soon, probably, I would think by Christmas, or maybe January, by the first of the year. So, that's going to be a good addition to the Coopers Grove here on 183rd Street. End of my.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have.
End of my report.
That's in, okay. Great, so next, we have the Education Park and Rec. Alderman Edwards, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. On November 4 at 5:00, I will have a meeting here at City Hall. I have contact today. I talked to Hillcrest, they gave me a coordinator. She said she had been talking to the young people at the school, and they want to learn about investments, so I'm looking for someone to help me explain to them how to invest in real estate. Also, I'm talking to District 144, so we should have two or three school districts at the next meeting. You're welcome to come. I also went to the park meeting, and I asked the president and the commissioners about the condition of our parks, and they explained to me that they pay a certain amount of money to the city, and the city is responsible after they pay the money. So, all the questions I asked, they say they've been trying to get the answers to. I'm going to work diligently to try to find out how we can get our parks back up, running, and open to our young, beautiful people. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. Next, we have, oh, okay, need a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion to open the floor to the public. Second.
It's been probably motion in second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, public, if you would like to address the council, watch the screen. You have three minutes to address the council, and it'll be a countdown. Step up to the mic here, sir.
Ronald Winston. So, a couple of questions, kind of piggybacking on what the Alderman just said, as far as park and rec. You know, I know that Country Club Hills struggles to try and get participation from the community, for whatever reason, but one of the things that I would like to see come back, because I used to play softball at this park, and I know that we, my team and other teams that join this league paid a certain amount of revenue to participate, and I think that that would be beneficial for just the community itself, because it's going to increase participation, and I guess it'll be a small stream of revenue. Second thing, I know we're coming up to the snow season. I don't know what can be done to stop this from happening, but I don't want to shovel my driveway and then have your snowplow come down and block me in with a.
and then have your snowplow come down and block me in with a four-foot, you know, mound of snow. I think that's just, you know, kind of productive to what everybody else is going through. So if that can be addressed, that'd be great. As far as this, the white elephant at the end of my subdivision, over here Churchill Downs, I'm worried about just, not just the hours of operation, but as far as the traffic going along one eighty-third, I don't see any signs of road expansion that's going to help reduce congestion along that way. I don't know if it's something that has been addressed, has been talked about. Uh, I haven't seen any, any, any information come down the pipeline about how it's gonna, you know, how it's not going to happen and, you know, really back up, you know, the, the community. Uh, the last thing I got a question about is after-school activities for the rec center. I would like to, you know, if possible, have someone come in, not just teach the financial end, but teach science and technologies, coding programs, to help kids get prepared for either Hillcrest High School, Tinley Park High School, wherever they're, even if it's a private school. But we've got to do something that's going to help the young kids coming up as well. And it may benefit some of the adults and the parents, you know, in the household as well, but that's it. Think I'm done. Yeah, that's about right. So hopefully, you know, these answers get, uh, get addressed sometime at the next town hall meeting, or whenever you see fit.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I can tell you now, uh, if you're interested in, I think, the men's basketball? Softball team? Uh, we don't have an issue. We used to have a massive softball team up at the community park years ago, and it kind of went away. So I would like for you to speak to Mr. Ross in the back, back of you there, and see what we can get going. If you're willing to work with us, we can probably make that happen. Okay, um. Uh, as far as one hundred and eighty-third Street is concerned, uh, that's an I.DOT, Illinois Department of Transportation. It takes them a little longer, uh, to respond, and we have to go through all the agreements and everything, but they're working on expanding one hundred and eighty-third Street along that project, so. Uh, I guess the council can a- answer any other questions that I didn't answer. Next person, please.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Pastor, first of all, for that great sermon this morning, I mean, this evening. Um, my first question is.
Excuse me, I need you to state your name, please.
Helen Myers, spelled M-Y-E-R-S. I apologize about that.
Thank you.
Watching that clock. Okay. My first question is a simple question. Occupancy laws and city ordinances work hand in hand in the city of Country Club Hills?
What's the question?
Occupancy. There's occupancy laws.
Occupancy.
In order to get an occupancy, do they work parallel with city ordinances? Because it kind of falls under the same law. Yes. Running out of time.
I don't know what she's talking about.
Occupancy law. Like to get an occupancy.
Commercial or residential?
Residential. The three main sources to get an occupancy is you have to have running water, you have to have electricity, and you have to have heat. That is a requirement, right? Okay. Now, my next question is city ordinances. What are the laws with residential city ordinances? And what are the safety laws? Because I'm tired of the miscommunication that I've been getting from the commissioner. What commission, ma'am? The building commissioner.
I, I think, um, if I may, I think you have a problem with, um, something with your heating?
We're not going to discuss that right now. I'm just asking.
Well, we can't answer a question unless.
But I was told not to bring it to the public, so I'm asking the questions.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure if we can answer the question, because everybody needs to know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, well, I'm glad we're going to put this on the table. Well, this is a public health crisis. This is a safety crisis. And I was told not to bring it to the public, but I'm going to bring it to the public now, because it is a safety, and it's a public issue. I don't have heat in my home, and I'm being stopped from putting heat in my home. I am a disabled woman. And yes, I do belong to a HOA, but they do not have a right to stop my human rights. And that's what the state of Illinois stated to me this, today on the phone. She wanted to know who the commissioner was, because he's been commu- miscommunicating to me. Okay? So this is a human right in a public health, and I'm attached to an elderly woman that I could possibly blow her house down if my house blows down. This is a fire safety hazard.
Okay, Ms.
This is the gas. Okay?
Uh, Ms. Myers?
Yes.
My attorney will answer that question for you. You got any comments? The city attorney will respond.
If it's a problem between you and your homeowners association, that's not really, that's not really the city. That's really a total.
No, because I spoke to the state today, and she told me that this is a health crisis. This is the issue where it's the occupancy that it could cause a safe hazardous, because there's no heat in the home, and there's a requirement of a certain degrees of temperature that heat has to be in the home for someone to occupy their residency.
Again, it's not the city that's not allowing you to, to, for you to have a new furnace in your house. We have nothing to do with.
That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying. I don't think you hear me.
Let's, let, let me, let me ask you a question. Who's stopping you from putting a heater in your house?
The building will not enforce the law. He will not enforce.
No, did you, is, is it your homeowners association that won't allow you to put the heater in the house?
Without the permit. They got a permit today. He told me that they wasn't going to send a permit. The environmentalists sent the permit in today.
Okay, but the, but the, the problem is.
All I was asking for was do you guys to enforce the law?
The problem is not with the city. The problem is with the associations that you have that say that you can't put a new heater in your residence.
That's not what they said. That's not what they said, sir.
But what did they say?
They said that they were against it for building structure, where someone did not write down the scope of the building structure. They sent in the diagrams. They sent in everything that is properly coded. It stopped when I came to see your building commissioner. He stated one thing, they stated another. Everything is in writing. He told me today.
Ms. Myers?
Okay, I'm over the time, so.
Ms. Myers, yes. Uh, my building inspector cannot, he cannot force the HOA to allow, he cannot force them to allow them, to allow them to put in a heating system.
That's true, and that's not the question I'm asking. That, that's not where I'm going.
Okay.
Where I'm going is, that's why I started off with, what was the occupancy codes within the Country Club Hills laws? What are the city ordinances within the city of Country Club Hills?
Is that you must have heat?
I went to file a case.
Must have heat and running water.
I must have heat, absolutely.
All right.
So I went to file a case with the courthouse.
So it's a legal thing that you.
And they will not move without a issue of a ticket being issued. Meaning, I have to show a cause. Meaning, why is it that I'm in this home under the condition that I'm in? In order for me to go see the judge, I have to show a reason. So there is a violation of me being occupancy in a home that doesn't have heat.
Well, I'm not for sure if it's a city that's violating you, because you're a longtime resident here, so you're not, you're replacing a furnace. So you have occupancy already.
But I shouldn't have occupancy. That's the point.
Okay, so the point is that, that, that your homeowners association agrees that you should have a furnace, or no?
We're not, I'm talking about your codes.
No, no, I'm talking, well, I'm talking about your problem, your problem starts from your homeowners association, correct?
No, it starts with the occupancy code.
You're already an occupant, so.
It doesn't matter if I'm an occupant. I don't have heat.
It sounds as if you want us to do the opposite. You want us to issue a violation so that you can.
Take it to the judge. That's what the judge is saying. I mean, what's.
And we understand.
So basically, they're not against, they're in violation, because they're not honoring the occupancy code of the city.
Absolutely, as well as the ordinances.
Correct. So you will need a violation against the, against the board, which is prohibiting you from putting it in, because you don't, uh.
I don't even want it against the board. I just want it to.
No, but they have to be fined and cited, because that's what you need in order to move forward.
I went to the judge. This is what she told me.
Okay, okay, uh, Ms. Myers, we will definitely deal with that. Now, the problem is, is that the HOA is okay with the furnace, but the one that you want to install is different from the rest of them in, in that, in that location, correct?
No, there's other ones that have them, and I sent you the pictures of the diagrams in the venting roofs. I sent you pictures of that.
Okay, Ms. Myers, we, after this meeting, come up and talk to myself and the city attorney. Okay, anyone else want to address the council? Thank you so much.
Uh, Leroy Barnes, uh, one eighty-one oh five, Sligo Way. Uh, Mr. Mayor and this council, I have a few questions, uh, real quick. Uh, you know, when you all vote on these committee, uh, reports, and maybe I'm the only one, but, uh, Watts Pla strategy, uh, if someone can explain what that is, because certainly, uh, my organization, we donated a truck and a half of water, six more. And certainly, I don't want to go through those changes, so if you all can kind of, uh, go over that, as well as the, uh, small business grant. In addition to that, uh, when the committee, when Alderman have committee meetings, uh, I know Alderman Evans mentioned a meeting tonight, uh, on November the fourth at, uh, 5:30, and the rest of them. Are all the public invited to those meetings? Okay, good, all right. And, uh, in the, uh, Public Works and Utilities resolutions from, uh, I.DOT and MFT Maintenance, uh, at the last town hall meeting, there was a discussion about cameras, uh, funding for new cameras throughout the city of, uh, Country Club Hills. Uh, would that be the area where we will look for some funding in order for that to occur? Uh, we talked about with the chiefs of police and the mayor. If y'all can address that issue. And then, last but not least, with this, this elephant that we've been talking about for the last month or so, uh, and I mentioned it to someone, uh, at last Wednesday, the twentieth, at about 6:12 A.M., I pulled out of my garage, which is where I live at, and an eighteen-wheeler was rolling right past my garage. It had enough lights on it to look like a Christmas tree. So is there a provision that we, perhaps, I don't know how it even came through that way, because if they came directly at the end of my street, which, at the end of my street, I can see Windsor, uh, they would have had to come over some type of barrier, or if they came down, I'm not sure what the street is where, uh, you all live at, Pat, was that Vest?
Summer.
Laverne?
Laverne.
Laverne.
So I don't know how they did that, but, um, I'm up at six o'clock in the morning on a prayer line, so if, if it's need be, I can be at my window looking to see if those trees, uh, trucks come by, because my camera for my ring goes off about that time, but by the time I look at it, they're gone. But that particular morning, that eighteen-wheeler was rolling, so I pulled off to the side and took pictures of it. So anybody else need to see that, uh, let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Burns, I did check into that. There was an i- isolated incident. That particular driver, they told me was lost. Trying to find the site. That was his first day on, on the site, and so it's not like there's a regular, um, uh, there's not a regular route past your neighborhood. That particular one, he was lost. I did check that out, and so hopefully, that won't happen again, so. Anyone else want to address the council before? And all right, wait, uh, the red light, I think, in the budget tonight, did we not pass, uh?
For a camera reader, yes, sir.
For the, yeah, license plate readers? So that was in the budget tonight. Okay. So, Mr. Burns, that's in the works. Yes, sir.
Again, Zachary Dumas, fifty nineteen, one hundred and eightieth Street.
Yes, sir.
I'm still addressing the logistic building, which I'll call the cube. It's going on back there. We haven't had any meeting or anything with the, uh, project manager. Uh, there's nothing that has been out to say that it's going to be a meeting, and we're still waiting for any information to have a meeting with this project manager, because there are things that we want to discuss with him. So, you know, this is the only time we was really aware of this like this, because if we hadn't been aware of this two years ago, we would have been full force like this before. So y'all saying it was out there, I just don't believe it was out there like it should have been, because the residents would have been up in arms about this if we hadn't known anything like that was going to be built in the back of our houses. So again, we wanted to know when there's going to be some kind of meeting planned for us, that we can attend this meeting with the project manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we close the floor to public?
Close the floor to the public?
Second.
Margaret Clark, thirty-nine thirty-seven West one hundred and sixth eighth Street. I work for Walmart. And I'm at the door. Does the, the, the parking lot belong to, is Walmart responsible for all the potholes in the parking lot? Are, are we responsible? Country Club Hills responsible for the potholes?
That'll be Walmart's responsibility.
Is Walmart's responsibility?
Yes, ma'am.
For the potholes? Okay, very good. Um, the small businessman grant, how do I apply for it?
Just ask for application at the end of the meeting.
Say again?
You can ask for an application at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Can you talk to your manager then about the potholes, since you work for Walmart?
No, because he's on vacation in the lady that's up at Park today, and, uh, preparing to meet, and I didn't know what to tell.
Okay.
So if I don't know what to tell, then.
Yes. Jim is responsible for. Yes. Close the floor.
Motion to close the floor to the public. Second.
It's been probably motion and second. Are there any questions? Nope. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next, we have the reports from the Alderman, and I started with Alderman Davis last time, so we're back to you this time. It goes around, you know?
All right, um, a suggestion for the mayor and Alderman and so on, the council. I was looking at this Brenham book, and it kind of gives a calendar of things that's going on in the different municipalities, and I noticed that we didn't have anything in there. Just a suggestion. Uh, this comes out in the mail, so all the residents will receive it, and it would explain what we doing for certain months. Okay? Second, I have a question for Public Works, uh, one seven one Street, Apple Tree and Pear Tree Drive. We started working over there, Mayor, and then we just pulled out, and there's a lot of potholes. And again, that is one of the oldest areas in Country Club Hills. Also, I had a resident call me at one seven six sixty Hazel Crest Drive and one seven six Place. The lights were out for two months, and they said they called the city three times and nobody responded. That's right in front of Hillcrest. We can't go two months without fixing lights. Also, uh, tree cutting and potholes is a major issue in Ward One, and I'd like to see something done as soon as possible. Uh, far as the park district, the gentleman had a question. Uh, when you look at the park district, we probably as one of the few or only one that doesn't have any programs up and running. Uh, reason why we have maybe lack of money or lack of employment. Second, uh, when I asked about the treasurer, I have Wednesday, June the second, twenty twenty-one Theater, ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand, but when I looked at the treasury report, it was less than forty thousand. So I'm trying to figure out where's the money and what happened, and why is it not in the bank account? End of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Spivey, next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're doing some resurfacing and sidewalks and driveway lifts here in the fourth ward. Those are going along smoothly. Um, I'd like to thank Chief Rogers for that. Uh, Public Works, we're moving right along as scheduled. Mr. Williams has stated something about the park recreation as far as like, um, like, um, that he would like to see more like IT programs for the kids, uh, things of that nature. I'm teaming up with a gentleman, Mr. Carter, who is going to bring a STEM program. If you give me your number, um, we can exchange numbers on that, and I will be bringing that program to, uh, school district, s- school District one sixty, and maybe we could implement that into the, um.
Is he here?
Recreation Center.
Is, did he leave? Did he leave? Okay.
Oh, okay. Second, you spoke on, the mayor answered the question about the moving semi that was going down the street at 12 a.m., so digress on that, but that's all I have right now, Mayor. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Spivey. Next, Alderman Evans.
Yes, I just want to mention that the senior snow removal applications were in the water bill, and to remind the seniors to get those in. I believe there is a cutoff of a certain limit, so it's first come, first served.
500.
500?
500 is the number.
500, and I know last year, we had quite a few people that were wanting their, seniors wanting their driveways done, but there is a limitation to the amount of driveways that we can safely get done with the number of staff that we have. So just a reminder that those were in the water bill to get those in. And then, I can take this off. And then, I do have a follow-up town hall meeting, scheduled for November 4th, that is a Thursday, and that's at 6 o'clock, and that is in regards to follow-up Cube's discussion. That's what we discussed last time, hoping to get some additional answers in regards to the questions that were on the table the last time. So we will be doing a follow-up on Thursday, November 4th at 6:00 p.m., because there were a couple of questions that were asked here as well as that went, and we are looking for that project manager or representative from the development to come and answer those questions, or to get our questions answered by someone of the development. The other, last thing I wanted to follow up on was the small business grant. I know someone did ask about that, so the applications are ready, I think, and there is a small packet of qualification information that goes along with that application. So in order to qualify for those grants, it must be a brick and mortar business, so no home-based business, and it must be a business with less than 25 employees, and the business must have been established prior to March 18th of 2020. So, but the details will be attached to the application for that small business grant, but we encourage those small businesses to participate. There are funds available, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize that for the small business loans, we're asking the aldermen and all the women.
They're not loans.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to scare people away like a loan.
Yeah, don't scare them away. For the grant, it's not a loan, it's a grant. So if you want to reach out to your alderwoman or alderman, that'd be great, because we want to kinda do it that way, because each alderman and alderwoman has businesses in their territories, in their wards. So we want you to reach out that way, and it looks like we're passing our packages now with the application, so. Okay. All right, so next, we have Alderman Lockett. Pinky, pink, what? Pinky Lockett, you say? Pinky?
Pinky Lockett? Thank you, Mayor, residents. I'd first like to start off and wish our city clerk, Patricia Hudson, happy birthday. Today's her birthday.
Ooh.
Thank you.
And then, I'd like us to all just pray for our Southland, for our community, for our country. I can say that things are not getting better, they're getting worse. We have small children, 10, 11-years-old, that have guns. If they approach you, if you step on their shoe in McDonald's, please ignore them. The gun violence, just the nonsense out here is terrible, and the holidays are approaching, so ladies, be careful when you're out at Walmart, when you're out at the stores shopping. Do not share or smell any perfume or cologne that someone wants to, for you to smell or anything like that. Be careful with your purses and be careful with your children. Make sure you lock your doors, and your kids are in seat belts, and just be careful through these holiday seasons. End of my report, and don't forget to come out and trunk a treat with us on Saturday and Sunday. That gives you an opportunity for your children to have enough candy that they probably won't and shouldn't have to go door-to-door with the COVID and other pandemic germs going around. Thank you, end of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Just try to address the issue of the snow blocking the driveway. That's a big issue in 5th Ward as well, because of the size of the driveways. I really don't know a definitive answer, but what I would encourage you to do, because it's kinda difficult when they're driving down the street, the snow obviously goes into the larger spot, but I encourage my residents to call, and then we do call Public Works if they can help, to try to come back and open that up, so. Particularly in cul-de-sacs, when they're going around the bulb, it just, I don't know the answer. Maybe Jerry, he might, but basically, it happens, so it's hard to prevent that.
Mm-hmm.
The potholes, and this is a question, Mayor, with the, with Walmart, we can write citations. Maybe that'll encourage the landlord to take care of them. I mean, with the lady that worked at the Walmart, we can always do that. As far as the police cameras, the cameras, that would be through the police department, through a budget thing to add that, and I think that was actually it, and I'm a big softball person, too, so I do remember when we had the softball in the park, so that would be a good thing to bring that back. And I think we ought to give Alderman Lockett a award for wearing that outfit tonight, so. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Alderman Davis. Yeah, we will have the inspectors to go up and look at the Walmart parking lot tomorrow, and when the manager comes back to work, we can maybe, you know, issue him a warning that he needs to get those potholes filled. And I also think that it would be a good thing to bring the softball back. I think we used to have female softball teams as well that worked very well in the city, and so I think when the pandemic is over, people are gonna be looking for some exercise, something to do, so hopefully, we can get a lot of volunteer for these teams, and we can start them up again.
Mayor, not only that, if we have softball recreation out there, we also can form a way of each community developing their own league within, you can have like a third ward basketball team or softball team, and you play against your neighboring wards. Those are kinda things that create camaraderie, you know, and it's a good thing, and, you know, if your team is better than my ward, then bring it, you know, that kinda thing. So, you know, get your five, whether it's football, basketball, we could do bowling, we could do a lot of things, but, you know, it starts within your community, and consult your alderman and see what they could get together, and then, and we take it from there. Because for a ward, we handle it.
Yeah, I think we-
I'm recruiting right away.
Uh-oh. Okay. I think it's good, because we need to come up with some creative ideas to get our young people involved in activities, rather than doing the violence that we've experienced in the community. So I think a little community camaraderie, a little community, you know, competition for the kids would be great, you know, flag football, baseball, softball, those kinds of things. So I think we can work it. We just need volunteers, so don't everybody, you know, come up here at once to volunteer. So when we end the meeting, we're looking for volunteers. With that in mind, I don't have anything else, other than the 31st is coming up, Halloween, we encouraging the community to come together for the trunk or treat here at City Hall versus having your kids to go through the community. So we have two different dates, Saturday and Sunday, so please, please come and participate. Make sure that your kids can get candy from us, and we know that it's safe, and so we are encouraging that, so. I think that's it, if I can get. He did already. You want to re-announce that? Or you got it? Yes.
Shred Day, Country Club Hills Theater, 9:30, 9 o'clock a.m. to 12, this Thursday, this Saturday.
Saturday.
So-
Motion for adjournment?
Please tell everybody, post it on your social media. We should have a good turnout.
All right. I need a second on the adjournment?
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
8:05 p.m.
If you would like to speak to the alderman, alderwoman, or the mayor, please come forward. And Ms. Myers, I think if you got a minute, come on up and talk to the attorney.